Good morning. I want to call this meeting of November 6, 2023, to order. May I ask Craig to pray for us?
We're glad to. Let's pray. Lord, God, thank you for this privilege that we have to start our meeting by coming before you, acknowledging your presence here with us. Father, we don't want to take you granted that we have that for you. Thank you, Lord, that we can acknowledge that we need your discernment and your wisdom. Father, we ask for your wisdom and your discernment in the heart of these gentlemen today as they consider the business of the county. Father, thank you for giving them this responsibility and their willingness to accept it. Father, I pray that in every decision that's made, we will honor you, we will please you. Father, we will act in accordance with your will. And, Father, we will always circle back to thank you for all of the ways that you have blessed us so abundantly in our community. Now, think about, Father, how we are safe here and we can conduct the business of the county. And you oversee that and you provide us with men and women who are willing to step forward and to serve their fellow man in that way. Would you bless them and protect them as they do their job? Christmending. Amen.
Amen. All right, before we get started, I want to echo Craig's prayer that there's so much bad going on in the world, the Middle East, terrible conflicts. Our United States government seems like we don't know which way we're going. But right here in Rankin County, well, music director from Rehoboth Baptist Church sang a special at my church Sunday week ago. And it really touched me, the anchor holes. And right here in Rankin County, the anchor holes. We're good. We're blessed. All right, I'm gonna open it up. Public comments, we have four people. I think we have some of the same interest to speak about. So who wants to be first out of this group? Adam, Jack, Kenny, Lee?
I think we're gonna do that.
You gonna go down lower and take care of that? Okay.
Our friends from PRV are here to discuss with us a matter that's under my section. It's under my section.
Okay, well, let's move on. Have y'all had a chance to look at the old business? And do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Yeah, second.
All right, Daniel makes a motion. Jared seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Daniel makes a motion. Jared seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Who's here for Mr. Sullivan?
Looks like it's gonna be Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Hicks.
Under the tax assessor section is authority to avoid tax sale and to refund any tax sale purchasers for Pen 33270 and create new tax statements by the office of the tax collector.
I'll make a motion for a second.
Calhoun makes a motion to approve. Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Ms. Caroline.
Good morning.
Good.
Good. Okay, item A is authority for my office to contract with Peregrine Services for the printing and mailing of the tax statements that'll go out the end of this month, 1st of December.
Motion approved. Second.
All right, Calhoun makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Item B is petition for change of assessment on 2018, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 personal property rolls and the 2023 real property assessment rolls.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, Jared makes a motion. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Harrison.
Good morning.
I'll make a motion approved. We're work accomplished and we're work scheduled.
Second.
All right. Jared makes a motion to approve. Calhoun seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Trying to go through these pretty quick. Request approval for Atmos Energy on Spelway Road to be installed between Turtle Creek Drive and Lakeside Drive in District 2.
Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Daniel makes a motion to approve. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
See, it'll be ceasefire live oak south end to conduct fiber optic.
Motion approved.
All right, Calhoun makes a motion.
Second.
Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
TEC utility permit crossing Walters Road and Bradshaw Road installed on Walters Road in Bradshaw District 4.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
We take E and F and G together, Steve. The, all three of those are Comcast permits. One's a District 3 property, District 4, and District 2.
Motion approved.
Second.
Calhoun makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mike. I think that's the quickest we ever got to, Mike. Tim, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you, Mr. President?
I'm good.
All right, the item A is Grace Acres, which was approved as a preliminary plat as Grace Estates. They changed the name. We're recommending approval of the construction drawings. That's a District 4 development off Highway 43, so one dead-end cul-de-sac road.
All right, I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Jay seconds that. Any other discussion?
Is it blacktop or gravel?
Do you want to answer that, sir?
Right now, it doesn't exist, so it's going to be paved.
Paved.
It's gonna be paved.
Paved.
A paved road.
No, I have enough gravel that we have inherited that I'm not building any new gravel roads. All right, we need to vote on that. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Item B, Mr. President, is the re-subdivision of part of lots B and C, Lake Harbor Platt. We recommend approval of that final plat. That's a PRV development off of 43. Of course, the county has the road, Lake Harbor Road is there, and there's a couple lots at front, 43 and Lake Harbor. And they're, I think in the original plat, they were just shown as maybe commercial. Now they're showing them as commercial residential potential, so they're just redoing the plat. We recommend approval of that.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Item C, Mr. President, is one of our ARPA projects. This is program element 3.61, Dry Creek at Thomasville Road. We recommend a final payment in the amount of $488,362.10 under purchase order number 231647 to Hemp Hill Construction, Inc., and authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jared makes a motion. Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
First item under my section is authority to cancel a service agreement that we have with TK Elevator Corporation. That agreement was dated August 16, 2021. What we need to do is terminate that agreement for cause. The reported cause is that we can't seem to get the service company to show up and actually do any service work. And so we'd like to have another shot at finding a service provider that can actually account for our needs and do those in a timely manner. So we would request authority for the county administrator to evaluate replacement service providers. This is a service. And then to make a determination and a recommendation later to the board concerning appropriate service providers.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Calhoun makes a motion.
Second.
Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Item B, gentlemen, is kind of a cleanup section. This is to assist the tax collector to correct records that reflect avalorum tax obligations that have been allegedly owed by former mobile home situations. Oftentimes, over time, we find out after the fact that what has been assessed on real property, that is a mobile home that's being assessed as real property, hasn't been there for years. And so we need to take advantage of an opportunity to correct those records and clean up our records. And so that's what this item does. Just need a motion to approve.
All right, do I have a motion?
So move.
Jared makes a motion. Calhoun seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
So what happened in item C, gentlemen, is further to our impasse that we've had with the property owner in Daniel's district. This is Joe and Brenda Edwards' situation. Eventually, Mr. Edwards and Ms. Edwards owned up to the reality that they had constructed an illegal facility, illegal structure, on their property, and they occupied that structure as a residence. Joe Edwards came in here and tried to claim that it wasn't their residence, but it was a deer camp. And that was ultimately unsuccessful. And they have decided that they want to come clean with the county. And so what they've done is they've come in and they have paid the appropriate amount of avalorum taxes that are owed as if that parcel is now being assessed as their homestead residence. So they have made an application to claim it as homestead, to pay the back taxes. In the meantime, the tax collector had generated, at my instruction, had generated tax bills that reflected that the structure was in place but was not afforded homestead exemption. And so those tax bills need to be voided. Those old tax bills need to be voided, and we need to authorize the tax collector to be able to mark her records, reflect in her records, that those tax bills are not going to be collected because they no longer apply. And so that's what that motion is related to. Just need a motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Daniel makes a motion.
Second.
Calhoun seconds motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
The next item under my section, gentlemen, is a discussion with you guys about kind of an oddity that we find in the medical cannabis law. That's under Title 41, subsection 137, subsection 57. And then there's a subparagraph in here. I want to read this for you. As you guys recall, back when we were trying to address what the county was going to do vis a vis medical cannabis and the new Medical Cannabis Act that was passed by the legislature, the legislature built into the statute the ability of any political subdivision to either opt in or opt out of the provisions of the medical cannabis law. This board chose to say nothing and thereby was allowed to be opted in. And what happened is that because of the county's determination not to opt out or to allow itself to be opted in under the statute, that drug along with it, any state agency that meets a particular definition, I want to read that to you, in any county or municipality in which real property is owned, leased or otherwise controlled by a waterway district or water management district created under Title 51 of the Mississippi Code, the decision of the county or municipality to opt out or opt in, as provided in this section, shall be binding on all real property in such district. And so because Pearl River Valley Water Supply District is a Title 51 entity created under state law, that picks up PRV as in essence opting in along with the county. Does that make sense? So they are along for the ride. There's another sentence here. And I'm given to understand that Lee Ansey, who was one of the principal drafters, I don't want to give you too much credit or not enough, Lee, so I'm trying to be careful with that. Lee telling me to move on. So Lee helped us with the code section here for a little bit of clarity. It says, "The ordinances, the ordinances of a county or a municipality related to the provisions of this chapter," meaning the medical cannabis law, "shall be applicable to all real property within the respective boundaries of the county or municipality in such district." That's in the code section that is referencing the carve-out of entities created under Title 51. And so I read this subsection here to state that if the county opts in by taking no action, which we did, PRV is automatically opted in to the medical cannabis statutes without any need for any additional action. And the ordinances of the county shall be applicable with respect to any decisions about medical cannabis activities as it relates to properties of the district. The reason that we're having this discussion is that because of this language, the oddity of this language, the unique nature of this language, and in essence, pulling the county ordinance in and making the county ordinances applicable to medical cannabis, applicable to PRV, is that it's unusual because that's not typically how we interrelate with PRV. Just as a quick reminder, when it comes to land use decisions that relate to leasehold properties controlled by PRV, typically, the PRV board establishes the regulations associated with that land use on their properties, their leasehold properties, by way of their lease. They establish the land use regulation. They don't have zoning authority. The PRV does not have authority under Mississippi law to create zoning ordinances. They have a land use plan. They have a comprehensive plan, and they make that information widely available to the public, to anybody that wants to know. We can all go look at that. And they typically, our history has been that they will align their land use regulations, their land use plan, they will align those in accordance with the county's overall comprehensive plan so that there is, generally speaking, agreement about proposed land use out into the future. But all of that is prospective. It's looking out into the future. It's not the same as a zoning ordinance. So this language creates a very unique feature that will be specific, in my opinion, is specific to medical cannabis decisions. The way I read this is that if there is going to be a medical cannabis establishment permitted or authorized by PRV under their own leasehold structures, then there should be the added responsibility to attain from this board an authorization that it's compliant with county ordinance, the county's zoning ordinance. That's the way I read it. So that's why I wanted to bring this to the fore. There are, I think, at least one or two, and we have visitors here from PRV, and I want them to have an opportunity to address the board directly. Mr. Adam Cho, who's one of the legal advisors for the PRV, is here. Adam, why don't you, well, I'll let y'all decide if you want to speak and address the board, but I think Adam's here to kind of help walk through and give you guys the perspective of PRV.
So are you saying that if somebody submits to put in a dispensary or whatever, they would need to come to the county if it's on PRV?
So I would think that if it's inside PRV, Brad, let's talk about the logistics of it. If they're not going to be able to secure a lease from PRV because PRV's not interested in that, they should start there. They shouldn't come here and request this board to address that. I think the first place to go is to PRV and have discussions with PRV about whether or not that particular use is appropriate for the location, would be afforded an opportunity to secure a leasehold interest. Only after that should we interface with that request. And I think it can be done, by the way, in tandem, probably should be done in tandem, so that we stay compliant with this code section. I think what can happen is an inquiry is made to PRV. Hey, I've spotted this leasehold property. I'm interested in a dispensary. Is it permitted? Can it be permitted here? And then I think at the same time, interaction with Renee's office can happen, and we can make a determination there that if PRV is willing to move forward, it appears that it would be compliant with the county's ordinance as well. That would be how I would.
Craig, before they start, Jake and I have, he asked me, and I'm not 100%. I think I know the answer. In less than law terms, lawyer terms.
Yes, sir.
If an applicant comes in that's within the PRV areas and they go to them and say, we want to open a dispensary, whatever it is, and they say, no, we're not doing it here, then they never get to this point.
That's exactly right.
Okay. If they say yes, then they come here and we go through our zone in different phases, just like anybody else. Okay, that's what we do.
Thank you, Craig. And first off, I'm gonna say we appreciate the relationship we have with you, and I know my bosses behind me appreciate the relationship we have with this board. Just very quickly, so we have approved one sublease for the dispensary at the Merit Health Building at the corner of North Shore and Old Fannin. And I stress sublease because that building at Merit Health has had a lease since 2009 for medical health and wellness purposes. So the board approved a sublease, I think sometime this year, and we felt like after the law was changed this year, that we could not deny it. We can't deny a sublease unless we have good reason. We didn't think we had good reason to deny it. So we are dealing with a sublease, not a new lease, and so I wanted to point that out first. When I asked our attorney what we need to look at with this, he did mention the interlocal agreement. I know we spoke about that briefly. In 2013, Rankin County and PRV signed into an interlocal agreement that still designated PRV Board of Directors as having basically the last say on zoning issues. And so I know that's something we might need to continue to discuss and see how that factors in here because I'm not exactly sure. Medical marijuana is confusing and zoning can be confusing. In that interlocal agreement, it says, "PRV's Board of Directors shall retain sole control of land uses of PRV property without regard to the zoning ordinances and regulations of the county." So I wasn't exactly sure how to deal with that. I know that's something, like I said, we may need to talk about. When the law was first passed last year, it left out, it did not say anything about state agencies or this provision. And so our board said, well, let's just not do anything. We do not intend on having medical marijuana. And then we spoke with Representative Ansey, and when it was being changed this year, and it was very specific that we would have medical marijuana somehow. And that Merit Health Building seemed like the perfect place because the lease was in place already and it says it was for medical purposes. And so we didn't feel like we could deny it. I was looking at the C3 zoning for Rankin County overlaid on PRV property. PRV zoning, I think, is in general more restrictive, I think. You double-checked me on that. But if we were to do this in the future and abide by Rankin County zoning, the only places where a dispensary could be would be Sportsman's Marina, Sunset Marina, and the mini storage. And so if we did this, it would probably effectively kill medical marijuana on PRV property, which I don't know if our board, if that would necessarily bother our board, but it may go against the intent of the statute. I'm not sure. So that's just a quick summary of what I've kind of been looking at, and I'm happy to answer your question.
So you muddy waters really good.
Very muddy, very muddy.
Yeah. I really appreciate Adam starting off by saying that we value the working relationship we have. I want to stress that. What I have found, Adam and I haven't known each other for very long, but I've been very impressed with their willingness to sit down and want to talk through issues and make sure that we address those and that we don't allow it to become something that it doesn't need to be. I wonder if maybe the solution to the current situation, which is one location, is simply to allow, if PRV's willing to do it, allow them to look at their comp plan to determine whether or not that parcel there is appropriately classified on their land use plan, on their comp plan, as in the nature of being highway commercial. That's kind of what our C3 is. We delineate a high-traffic commercial C3 as an appropriate location for our dispensaries. And that's how you set your ordinance. So I think there's probably very specific solutions that we can bring to bear that will allow for compliance with the state statute. Adam raised the issue of the interlocal agreement. And here's the thing, let's see, I'm looking at 1, 2, 3, three supervisors out of five that had absolutely nothing to do with interlocal agreement with PRV in 2013. That goes all the way back to a point in time when we were addressing the overlay district. And so that interlocal agreement is specific to the overlay district, and it has to do primarily with things like on-street parking and signs and billboards and other things like that. We tried to pick up and address some things that were specific to the reservoir community in particular and allow for an overlay. And wisely, the board at the time said, you know, we don't need two sets of regulations for everybody up there to have to deal with, so let's agree that we're gonna have one set, and the primary set to refer to would be the reservoir, would be PRV's leasehold interest. It made sense. It's worked well for us. We're able to navigate all of that with no real issues. There's, as I said, there's good commonality between PRV's land use plan, its comprehensive plan, and our comprehensive plan as the county. Those things overlap one another in so many ways. And so there's good coordination there to make sure that we don't step on each other's toes if we can avoid that. And so it's worked well for us. I don't look for this, honestly, I don't look for this to be something that we can't get past. In fact, I think it really is just a simple matter. Can we have an opportunity at a later date? Because this is just a discussion item. But can we have an opportunity at a later date to simply get into compliance with the statute as written and as passed by the legislature by reviewing the Merit Health situation and allowing us to pass over that under our own context here and see if we can get to a point where we're copacetic, we're ready to move?
What's the zoning on that?
I don't know how, well, what is our zone? Do you know what the county's zone is on that? Do you know?
Don't you think it's C2?
Is it C2? All right. Yeah.
It's not, it's not C3.
I don't think it is. And so the real question at that point becomes, is it a candidate for a county rezoning to put it as a C3? Is there traffic, highway traffic? Is there heavy traffic in that location?
So C3 is C2. It's all C2.
All right. So it, you know, we can look at it, and I think we just need an opportunity. I need to hear, I need direction from you guys and put a plan in place.
Maybe some of Jay, but it's really Daniel and I. I would like for the reservoir PRV to work with Renee, and let's see if it needs to be redistrict, I mean rezoned. If we're not seeing a need.
Yep. Well, I think Adam.
Let's just respect the zoning that's there.
Not to interrupt, I apologize, Steve, for interrupting, but along the lines of what Adam is saying, keep in mind that the medical cannabis law.
I understand.
Is very clear in terms of directing local political subdivisions. What the law says is this, hey, county or city, don't set your zoning regulations in such a way that you essentially prohibit the use.
But we're not setting this zoning. It's already there. It's intact.
Correct. But what we did, Steve, when we adopted our medical cannabis zoning ordinance, the section on medical cannabis, we said very specifically, if it's gonna go in a commercial zone, it's gonna go in a specific commercial zone, C3.
Okay.
And what Adam just told you is there is precious little C3 within PRV's universe. There's almost none. Two marinas.
So really, to make this nice and neat, if PRV was changing their land use plan to make it more accommodating to a C3 zoning, then since we work hand in hand, we'd be most likely changing ours.
I think Jay's put his finger right on top of where we are.
I mean, that's what I wanted them to work out with Renee. Is that what the board wants? Is that what they're asking, Adam?
So let's, logistically, how it probably So let's, logistically, how it probably should work the cleanest way is, PRV would look at its own comprehensive plan and address these, this specific area to determine whether or not it is a candidate for updating the land use, its own land use plan.
Yes.
And then the county recognizes that. And by the way, the timing on this is impeccable, because literally, the next board meeting we have, you will be hearing from CNPDD about an update to your own comprehensive plan. So right now is the time for us to look at this. We're about to update our own comprehensive plan. It would be appropriate for us to pick up in our amended comprehensive plan, adjustments in this area that are appropriate, that this board deems to be appropriate, that would align with what's set out in the statute I just reviewed. If we can do that relative, I don't know that it's critical that they do it first or we do it first, but we have an opportunity to address it, and I would like for them to have an opportunity to do the same thing. I don't know how this aligns with their timing on update of the comprehensive plan. They may not have, they may not be on y'all's calendar for the time being, but hopefully, we can get that aligned. And then, once the comp plan is addressed, you can make your zoning ordinance upgrades commensurately. That's typically how we do it. Comp plan first, zoning ordinance, try to do those together, so we have one public hearing, one publication. We always try to do those together. So that would be my advice. Let's, let's work together with PRV to see if we can update both comprehensive plans to align with what we see is happening in this environment. And let's make sure that we don't have a situation where both PRV and the county could be called to task about setting your regulations in such a way that you, in essence, preclude the use.
We have three areas that you can see right now. Is that what you said? That is on C3?
Two marinas and the mini storage. I'll spill away.
Yeah, so what that means is, there's, there's no usable property, Steve. Those, those properties are already being utilized for purposes that don't align with, I don't think they align with medical cannabis.
But if someone.
Yeah, so there's not. There's not any.
If someone wanted to buy one of those three, I bet there's a price.
Mr. Jack, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd like to make just a couple of comments. This is a very, to me, is a very complicated situation, and PRV and Rankin County has had great working relationship for years. I've been involved in this board for many years. And I want to be very careful that we don't get forced into doing something that's contrary to what Rankin County has. And this is a, when I began getting calls about this a few weeks ago, you know, our attorney is seeing one thing, and I suggested this individual that he get with your attorney, and the two attorneys get together and see what we can come up with, is make this thing as smooth as it can be. Again, I'm not supporting issues of whether we should or shouldn't have it. I feel very strongly personally, but I don't want us to get crossed up with PRV and Rankin County. Y'all, we've had great working relationship, our zoning, and this is something that's, I think, one of the most serious issues we've faced, and I think our board is totally confused right now as to what we should or shouldn't do. But I just want you to know, and your attorney, that we need to work this out where we don't, it doesn't look like we're disagreeing and fighting each other.
That's our goal, too.
Thank you.
Anything else, Adam? Okay. All right. Gentlemen, that's all we have, is just a discussion. So I think we've got our marching orders. Unless somebody up there tells me you're on the wrong path, I'm going to get with Ms. Renee, we're going to get with Adam, and we're going to start working together on trying to find a solution that seems to work for everybody.
We can have that by the next meeting.
We can, we can have some progress on it by the 15th, and I think if there are going to be any tweaks that are necessary in our comp plan, we can also discuss those on the 15th. I'd also invite Adam, if he's interested, and come back on the 15th and see what we are talking about and doing with respect to our comp plan. And then we'll, that way, we can all stay on the same page, it'd be a good opportunity.
Lee, it would have been easier for us, especially in this situation, if the RV State would have been looked at just like a city. And we would, but it's not, it's not that way. And we do want to work with y'all. Whatever y'all, what's best for y'all is also what's best for the county. All right?
That takes care of item D. Item E, Ms. President, is authority to publish a request for qualifications for professional services. This is primarily related to mitigation, wetlands mitigation, that we're going to run into on our ARPA projects. We need to do a request for qualifications so that we have access to affordable mitigation services related to our ARPA projects. We're going to run into some mitigation requirements on, I'm confident, on Oak Grove, although we are hopeful that that's not going to be a significant deal, but we need to, we need to have ourselves in a position where we can take advantage of being able to move rapidly. So this is going to allow us to do that. So I just need authority, just a motion to approve, authority to publish requests for qualifications on that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, Calhoun makes the motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion?
You know what rapidly means, Bishop?
Yep.
In their eyes? No, 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 it's too quick.
It's all relative.
It's not going to happen that fast.
All right, and all in favor? Any opposed? Most passes.
In four years, we're going to go to lunch, hold hands, and talk about this situation, you know? Because it's still not going to happen. It's where projects go to die, though.
Oh, Lord. All right, item F, moving on. Item F, this is acknowledgment of receipt of a change of assessment for Symmetry Energy Solutions. Gentlemen, this is another Gulf South customer that has multiple customers, and this is for escape personal property taxes associated with tax years 2017 to 2022, acceptance of the change of assessment, authority of the tax collector to prepare tax bills with accrued and compounded interest and collection penalties, and to deliver those tax bills for payment. So I just need a motion to accept the assessment and to authorize issuance of the appropriate tax bills. So move.
Second. Jay makes motion. Jared seconds motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Gentlemen, this is not under my section, but I want to just, this is for information purposes only. You guys will recall that, and this is further to what we just talked about with Gulf South. Gulf South Pipeline made the unfortunate decision to file a lawsuit against Rankin County to try to block Rankin County from collecting the property, personal property taxes that were owed. They sued us in Heinz County, and we ended up taking that case all the way to Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court not only reversed them, reversed the decision of the judge to keep it in Heinz County, and said this case has to be tried in Rankin County. Not only did they do that, they also, also ordered Gulf South to pay the county's expenses associated with their decision to file in the wrong county. And so we have a check from Bosch &amp; Bingham, representative of the county's expenses.
Wouldn't it be more attorneys with them?
Sir.
Wouldn't it be more attorneys?
Yes, sir. I thank you, Brad, for reminding me, our good friend Mark Baker, he didn't sign the check, Brad, but I'm going to ask him if he would mind endorsing it.
Do you need us to vote on cashing it?
No, sir. I don't, because I'm confident we're going, we're going to put this in the account, and we're going to be thankful that we got it.
How much is the check, Slade?
It's about $1,100. It's not insignificant, so, but I do want all of the taxpaying citizens of Rankin County to know.
Maybe take a picture of Frank.
That we, that we really appreciate the fact that our Supreme Court's looking out for us, and that the citizens of Rankin County are going to have their day in court, and it's not going to be in Heinz County. It's going to be in Rankin County. And so that's a good thing. I've got a couple of items, gentlemen, that I'm going to add under additional business that I'll ask you for help on. I think we'll go ahead with Mr. Hicks.
Thanks, Mr. Hicks.
I like the change he's up, man. He's getting up.
Yeah. This must be serious.
I'm just going to be here a while.
Wow, Lord.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Item A is discussion of potential action on the increase of our house count. This is annual house count. We did some increases earlier this year, but they never reflected that in the bill. And so we have a total increase of, for the year, of 256. It takes our house count for the county up to 30,362 on waste management beginning in October.
Is there some reason we wouldn't want to do this?
No, we have to do it by the contract.
And we're paying for it.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion and approve.
All right. Calhoun makes the motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
All right, I have a couple of items of additional business. The first item is going to be authority for the board, we need to add authority for the board president to sign an engagement letter with Grantham Pool for our '23 and '24 fiscal year audits. We've been released by state audit to pursue and go ahead and start working on our next year's audits while we're waiting on them to finish our '22 audit.
So I'll make a motion to add, and can I do the same thing and just make a motion to approve in the same motion? Do we got to come back, or just, you'd rather me do it separately?
He's shaking his head yes, so I say yes.
So I'll make a motion to add it to the agenda and to approve.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Daniel to give the board president the authority to sign engagement letter for the payment and request of next audit, 2022 and 2023 audits.
23 and 24.
23 and 4?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion by Daniel, second by Jared. Any other discussion?
I have a question. How do we come up with this group?
They've audited, it's, it's Grantham Pool has combined with our former auditor.
Okay. All right.
We're familiar with them.
Gotcha.
And this will be the first time in five years we've had somebody outside the state auditor.
They're outside the state?
No, outside of the state audit.
Outside the state audit.
Well, we, we were looking at having to go to Tennessee or somewhere, and that also would be.
We were looking at being forced to go to Tennessee.
Per diem, putting these people up. So that's not happening.
No, it's a good thing.
We're going to save money and get it done in a quicker timeframe.
Hopefully.
Quicker timeframe.
Surely be quicker.
All right. Our motion was by Daniel, second by Jared. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
And just to add on to that, for your information, we've been pushing to get a draft copy of our current year audit. We've been informed that our bond rating could be withdrawn as early as next week if we don't have more information to Moody's. So we've been asking.
All right.
Not good.
Yeah. The second item I'd like to add is authority for the board president to sign a contract with Dean Cove for the sale of two surplus vehicles, and that auction is on November the 15th.
I'll make a motion and add.
Second.
All right.
I'll make a motion and approve.
Calhoun makes motion to add and approve a contract to Dean Cove to sell some surplus property. Jay seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
I do have one item in executive for personnel.
All right. You don't have any, yours is not additional.
All right, one thing on additional business.
Yeah.
About our pole workers. I was informed that there's a possibility that.
We're going to talk about that in executive.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
I guess it would be personnel.
Do I have a motion to go into executive, and then for what?
I'd make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right. Jay makes a motion discussing need for executive. Jared seconds that motion. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes now.
For executive session, personnel litigation.
Jay makes a motion to be in executive session for litigation and personnel. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? Motion.